Any of you guys going to the Executive Board?
I would probably go. It's actually, I get some Mondays off. Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, because I get that more early than take those three days. So that's why it's always worked out that we meet on Tuesdays to Thursdays.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm gonna go to that one. We will pretty quickly, I think. It'll still be a few minutes, but...
You want me to leave? You want me to stay?
No, you're welcome to stay. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:38. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
You go first, Meg.
Oh, I just have some amendments to the minutes for March 6th, so... Is that where I would mention that?
Or when we get to the consent agenda? Okay. Anything else? There was something... So was it...
See if we can change the name to White River Valley.
Want to discuss that?
Okay, so do we want to put that under discussion items? 5.4, White River Valley Union District. And then 5.5, Shannon?
Two things I'd like to add. One is consideration of a resolution on gun violence. It's being considered by a number of school boards in Vermont. And I actually, I thought it might be printed out, but since we didn't get it printed out, I did just email it to everyone, so if you have a device, you can access that. And then also, a discussion of snow days and the significant impact they have on families in the area and are there some creative solutions we might be able to use for that?
Move the flower.
Well...
Well, doesn't work.
That'll ruin our enrollment. All right. Anything else? Any other additions to the agenda? Okay. All right. That brings us to public comment. There is no public. All right. Consent agenda. The minutes of February 20th, 2018, they're in the packet. These aren't the ones, or did people have...
This isn't the one that I wanted to...
Okay. All right. Sure. From... All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay. Lisa, the amendments?
Yeah, amendments to the meeting on March 6th. Pam Brown sent me... Tammy Benoit sent me notes that I reviewed and edited and then submitted. And then Pam Brown, for the Bethel Town Clerk, had also taken notes. And I found a couple of bits in her notes that would improve the notes from March 6th that I would like to add. One would be the name of somebody who seconded. And the second one was a little paragraph that gave a little more detail to a certain part of the presentation that I thought would be worthy. So I have those pieces highlighted in my computer bag in the other room. So I could go get them if people want to see what it is that I was actually wanting to add to the notes, but...
Can you email us the edited copy and we'll move this to our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the, I guess, the second full paragraph, my last name spelled wrong.
Was this on the March 6th?
Yep. Because Lisa Floyd and Chris Riley provided updates on REILOY.
Yeah.
R-E-I-L-O-Y?
Yep.
Just want to make sure I'm getting it right.
Oh, yeah.
R-E-I-L-L-Y.
The E before the I?
I before E except after C and the R in Riley.
Yeah, that, and that rhymes.
That is true. It's all, everything I've ever known.
It's the Irish.
Okay. All right. That was it for that? Okay, because you're gonna provide us with the copy. All right. So special education budget. We were, this got on the agenda because after the annual meeting, we ended up getting a lot of community questions and having questions ourselves about it. So I think Rodney, you suggested that it should be something that we discussed a little bit more, so I thought it was valuable for us to have Bruce here in order to explain sort of...
Basically, I mean, we can't really do anything about the budget, but there is a lot of people that question it and whatnot. I guess we just want to cut corners wherever we can. You know, everybody's cutting budgets and it is a big chunk of it.
Well, the funding comes from the Ed Fund. You know, I mean, that's basically where a large percentage of it comes from. And they have some pretty strict guidelines of what they will pay for and what they won't pay for. You, some of you have never been in a situation where some of the special ed employees have been used to do things that aren't special ed duties. And at the end of the year, if that happens, you get billed back for the bus duty and study hall coverage and things that aren't that way. So I guess I need to know. I think there was some questions from the floor regarding the salary lines for that. I think they believe that the special ed director was making a couple hundred thousand dollars, but really what was going on there is that there were several people that were covered under that number. And I guess I need specifics on what you want to know.
So the specific question that I was asked that I felt unprepared to answer was, in the case of alternative placements, if a student is not yet on an IEP and goes to an alternative place that were not reimbursed, and those can sometimes be extremely costly. So we were asked what number of students are in alternative placements without a special education plan?
I can't answer you. I'd have to do some research.
Okay.
So you're saying that if we send a student out that doesn't have a special IEP, special education plan, then the school is going to be paying for that?
100% of that, correct?
Well, I mean, they're...
The district.
Yeah, they get money from the Ed Fund.
How would the decision to send them out be made without an IEP?
I mean, there can be a variety of factors. It just, their success, the way that they impact other students' education.
If they are, if they're throwing chairs and disrupting...
Safety.
You know, safety issues.
Is that more behaviorally?
Well, I mean, it doesn't always have to be that way, but kids that are on 504 sometimes. The 504 is a federal mandate for, you know, work that we have to do with kids who, let's say, have a, are not, don't meet special ed criteria, but we still have to work with them. We have to provide accommodations for them. And that's what the federal law says. The law is kind of an unfunded mandate. There's no budget for it, but we have to do it anyway. And there are strict guidelines of how we have to decide who gets that help and who doesn't. So I guess, you know, that I would have Deb Matthews come and address you with all these things. We do have some kids that are in our own programming, like this restorative class, I believe, that aren't necessarily covered by IEPs. And they're there because they need to be there. And, you know, I mean, we started that program because there were significant kids that were really disrupting everyone and they needed to get some...
Did you want me to talk at some point about that group that I meet with in Hartford with negotiations? Is this a good time to do that, or...
Negotiations are next on our agenda. Do you want me to pop in when?
Thanks, James.
So I asked Deb to come and address you on that. She would be able to be very specific with you about funding and the need for placement and probably the numbers of kids.
If we are, I know you were looking to expand the restorative classroom program here in the SU. If we were able to do that, would we be able to bring all of those students back? Or are some of them have such severe difficulties that they can't come back from places like Brownboro?
No, one size doesn't fit all. I mean, and we may be able to make some significant impact and probably some significant savings. But there's some obstacles. Space. Making sure that we have the right people. Dr. Ketter has been very good to us. He likes this SU. He's been working with kids in a restorative program, which is a model program. I mean, it's really hard to find placements for kids that are third grade down. You know, usually they get aids and people put them with aids and they just, that's what they do. But the therapeutic value of that, the proactive approach to that, the therapy part of it, is not always being handled when you do that. It's just more or less somebody there to stop them from doing what they're gonna do. But we don't get into the...
Aids aren't really trained to do the...
No. They may be able to stop them from kicking somebody, but it's not...
Would actually, if you use maybe like an interventionist or something like that, it might work better, but it costs more.
So Dr...
Stop doing it.
Dr. Ketter's kind of taken them back and kind of reduced their world a little bit and tried to get the kids to maybe relearn some things. And it's a pretty controlled environment and it's done that way deliberately to try to be able to do that. We are, we've had some luck with sending some kids back out once they've been in there for a little while.
In the restorative classroom?
Yes. Yes. And in some cases, it hasn't worked and we've brought them back and we've started with them. We also know that one of the mistakes that we've made is that some of the staff that they go back to integrate with in those classrooms need to be trained more than they are. It's not only the kids, it's the staff to understand where the triggers are and to try to make sure that they know not to go there and that the teachers know how to not set them off, I guess. So I'm very proud of that program, but I think it would be very helpful if we had an opportunity to maybe take it up a couple grades and maybe go up to eighth grade, but maybe only up to sixth grade. We originally created the program, which was a one through three grades. We've expanded it to fourth grade because some of the kids just weren't ready to leave. And, but there needs to be an assessment of our space. And I know that Deb asked the principals to please take a look at what they may have in the way of space as we rearrange our classes and everything. So right now, Royalton has, is housing the program, but they don't have any kids in the program. You know, it's other SU schools that send them there. I mean, it's just the way it is right now. Doesn't mean they won't have one next week, but, and they have had them in the past, but right now, they don't. So, and it's a great space. They're down in that basement section.
Old music room.
The old, yeah, music room. So it's, when I was in New Hampshire, I had two of these programs going on. One for the little guys and, I don't know, third through eighth and then one for the high school kids. And they were always full, always full. And so...
And being in central Vermont, if we expanded, is there, there may be revenues being...
Oh, yeah.
From other SUs?
We've had people knocking on the door and asking to put kids in now. I mean, but we haven't gotten to the point, we want to take care of our own kids first and we haven't gotten to the point where we open the doors. But they're asking because you can't find programs for these, this young student, so...
And hopefully it actually gets them off their IEP.
Well, that's the point, is to get them...
It's not just save money, but it is to make things better.
That's, that's to try to get them turned around and back in their classrooms as soon as possible. I think I would like, and I'm not going to ask you now, but I think one of the things that we have been interested in is maybe not putting them back necessarily in the school that they came from. These restorative kids I'm talking about. That maybe a fresh start somewhere else might help them. But that takes a more of an SU discussion about them and it's also kind of a case-by-case basis.
Why do they merge so many districts? Is it possible to put them back in the same district? Let's say they came from Chelsea, but you put them back in the Tombridge School system?
Perhaps.
If we're all working on it. I mean, right now, we're all on two students.
Right.
Or if they came from Royalton, give them a fresh start in Bethel if they needed that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't impact anybody's budget as far as...
Well, the parents have something to say that this. So, I mean, it's not just, they can't just unilaterally decide that that's what they're gonna do, but it would be nice if that was an option. It would be really nice if that was an option. But I'm thinking a little more radical than that. If they're from Chelsea, maybe they come back to Royalton or if they're, or vice versa. You know, I don't know. We are gonna have seven special needs buses that are gonna be buzzing around the SU as a part of our new contract. They're gonna be vans that should be available some part of the day. And I was thinking while we were making those presentations about the forest and moving kids around to, you know, be involved in that. Transportation's always an issue. You know, if you don't have it, you always want it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I didn't answer more specific questions.
Oh, that's okay.
Answer them.
One other thing to potentially add to the agenda. An update on the principal search.
Is that, is that executive session personnel or...
I don't think...
No, as long as we don't get into a lot of detail, it's fine.
Okay.
If we talk about the individual candidates, then that's a different story, so...
All right. So negotiations and representation. I think a couple of people have attended negotiations meetings. We will need to have our own negotiations representation. And Rodney and I probably can't represent us. Rodney, because Jamie teaches here, his wife. And me, because it was mentioned that because of how fact-finding works, they look at the area contracts. So because I teach in a public school one district over, people, there was concern expressed that it could be conflict of interest. So by getting teachers a really good deal here, if I did that, then I would in some ways, potentially, if I were calculating enough, impact my own contract and livelihood thereby.
You know, you're sitting over there just going, "Ah, it's all..."
I know. So I would rather not have anyone think that about me. And I think that choosing from among the four of you would be the best way to go. Gio has some things to say about stuff we should think about when we do this. So I'll go grab him for that.
Want me to go?
Sure, if you want to. I think it's probably less likely that you'll triple for the board.
I don't know. Been a long time since I skipped road.
I just wanted to say too, I read out on it a little bit. Basically, you can talk about migration. I can talk. I can't talk about negotiations. I can listen to them. If you guys have information about what I vote teachers raises. It's okay to talk. I can't, the only thing I can't do is try to influence your vote. Like, I can't sit here and say, gee, I think teachers need a raise. You know, that would be, you know... So that's why I...
We're in executive session discussing it.
Right, man, but I can discuss it. I can listen, but I can't comment. I just can't engage or try to persuade anybody to go a certain way.
And all of the negotiations have been happening in open meetings, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, how common is it around the state that these happen during the day? I mean, that's, I would love to do this, but having negotiations during the day, especially on short notice, I can't take a whole day.
Well, all the, you didn't see this, but all the original early meetings were at night. And, but we've gotten into mediation and getting a federal mediator come at night from New York is just not gonna work, so... And we had Ira LaBelle, who was a mediator that did the first round of these and he lives in Albany, so in New York as well. So, yeah, we're down to a point where it's true, you know. I feel guilty in asking board members to give up work for a day. They've always been pretty generous with their time, but I know that they're just as busy as anybody else, so...
I mean, for me, it's just I have to reschedule all these patients and move them to different... I'm not gonna ask them to do that.
Yeah.
No, I think normally, in the normal part of negotiations there at night, they all, all of them have been. But we're now into a pretty specialized place where we need help.
And is it safe to do?
Well, I've only been here four years and I have my second contract negotiations. I think we settled last time before we had to go to mediation, but it took a while and it took some, you know, kind of a full court press to get there. And, but I don't think we went to mediation for fact-finding last time. This is mediation, fact-finding, and now another mediation is what it is. This, the federal mediator is a new, new round of that. I'm very hopeful. We had a very productive meeting the other night. We tried to hash out some of the disagreements around the table and get pretty much on the same page. But, you know, you're meeting a group that have other interests and value things other than us. So, you know, I mean, everybody wants the best for kids, but it's, how do we get there? You know, how do we get to that place? So I don't know what's gonna happen next. I mean, after this one, I don't know. So...
And my understanding is it can be as many or as few, even none, from any board?
There are some of the boards that don't send folks and there are some board members that frankly don't show up because they've got other things that they've gotta do. But we need to have a, we like to have a quorum. Of, that means five members, five different board members from different boards. And we have had quaroms lately where everybody, I think we had eight or nine the other night. It was, it was good representation.
And one of the interesting things about this is that you will just finish if this gets settled on Thursday. And then when do negotiations begin again?
You're answering a question, asking a question you know the answer to.
I know it's soon. I don't know how...
Well, in the case of support staff...
One year or two?
Yeah, in the case of support staff, we settle for a two-year, so that next round probably won't begin until early winter.
Yeah.
So we have a little bit of a reprieve. I don't know what's gonna happen with these guys. And that's one of the points of negotiations, whether it's gonna be a one-year, which means this year that we're currently in, or it's gonna be two-year or something else.
So depending on the group that's negotiating, it's either negotiating for one-year contracts or two-year contracts. If it's one-year, then as soon as you wrap one up, you're getting ready to start with...
Or it could be a three-year contract. I mean, if anybody's willing to go that, that place. I think they're pretty rare these days.
Right.
Because nobody knows what health insurance is doing and all that kind of thing.
Literally.
So we've had a real, we've had a real, you know, I don't see any long-term contracts. Although I did hear one that's a three or four-year, not too long.
And how often do these groups meet?
Well, that's been a point of contention too. We've wanted to meet a couple times a month. The union wanted to meet once a month. They didn't want to meet over the summer. I, makes it sound like I'm whining, but...
We are.
You wanna, you wanna, the question is how often do they meet negotiations?
One of the tactics of the NEA is to lengthen the process and it wears us down. So, and it works. We get wore down. We're volunteers and they're not. They get, in essence, they don't, they don't get paid for the time at the table, but they get paid because they make money. So we have a, there's a regional, the VSBA is working with Joe Blanchett. Joe Blanchett used to be a negotiator for the NEA. He has since left the NEA and now he's got his own practice and he's been working with boards, educating us on how to be better negotiators. And we're woefully inadequate. So what he's done is he has a series of regional meetings that he does around the state. And superintendents and a board member go to these. It's not an official position. It's not a committee of the board. It has no ability to make any kind of decisions. So because it doesn't, it doesn't have to comply with open meeting laws since we're not making decisions there. So right now, it's Hartford, we meet in Hartford, they send a rep. I've been going for us, White River. We've seen folks from Orange East, Washington Central, which is Woodstock area. Windsor comes, who else am I thinking? So we just sit around the table and we just say, here's what's going on. And then Joe says, okay, you might think this, this and that. Somebody else at the table might say, in my experience, you might try this. We make notes, share decisions, we don't, because that's illegal. There's no like, okay, we're all gonna come out and advocate for the same thing. But we do share our experiences. So I've, being a short timer on the board, would love to slough this off on somebody else. You'll learn a ton. It's a great group. It's actually, I actually enjoy going and...
So it's like a negotiator support group?
That's a good way to word it.
And it's just one person from the SU or one person from each board?
I've been going, I was going to the one that meets in around the hill area. Well, Gio's gone down there, but I couldn't keep up.
You said so many meetings.
I just had too many meetings, I couldn't go anymore.
In fact, I told Bruce I didn't want him to come because he had too many meetings and he needs to knock something off his plate. So I think in the future, if things got lighter for him, this might be something he would come back to.
So one or two of us presumably could go.
Well, they only want one.
Only one.
Joe would like just one. And he wants the same person coming consistently. I haven't always been able to make, because sometimes actually, there was dates we were actually negotiating when they did this. So there's a, and it's probably bimonthly it's been meeting. Some, I don't think we've met now in probably three months because everybody's settled but us now. So they're all getting ready for their next round of negotiations and we're still...
I'm sorry, did I roll my eyes out loud?
And we're still at it. So it's extremely valuable. So this is the kind of insight that I take back to the team and say, this is what I'm hearing from other boards.
And where would you bring it back to the team and what format? You don't, this is where you could just share in an email what you've gotten from the support?
You should just share it. I'd just come back and say verbally, what's going on. I don't, I don't put together a report or anything.
Gio, before you came in, Andrew asked a question. And I don't have a long enough history back to, you probably do, but I don't, about previous negotiations, is this going the longest, the farthest? I said, last time, we didn't get to mediation or fact-finding. We were able to settle before there. Do you know the history of this?
Well, it's changed. It's a pretty tough history to explain because it's kind of comparing apples to oranges. So in Bethel, they've always had, they've had a history for a while of fairly contentious negotiations. And it's not, I think they've gone to fact-finding and mediation in recent years.
You're saying in Royalton or Bethel?
No, Bethel.
Bethel.
Royalton was quite different. We actually did collaborative negotiations for the first, I'm gonna say, two contracts I did with teachers.
Yeah, John was talking to you about that.
Yeah, we just sat around and just say, what do you think? And, and reached quick settlements. The nature of the association in Royalton has changed. They don't play that way anymore. And so we don't play that way. They don't play that way anymore and so we don't play that way anymore. But not last time, we were, so a couple, a bunch of years ago, we brought that, all five towns in the old Orange Windsor had separate contracts. And we brought all five into sort of one contract. It's only sort of one. We didn't quite unify it.
Some outliers even in that contract.
Yeah, so we got close and that took us two and a half years. And really, the only way, now we started collaboratively, but the association members in the room weren't being collaborative. Behind the scenes, they were being coached and trained. Instead, everybody was supposed to come in the room and just say what they thought and kind of reach a nice, you know, let's do this. But they actually came in with positions. It only became apparent till later in the process what was going on. And at that point, it was kind of interesting. Bruce, Don Shaw and I pitched an unrehearsed walkout on the, like the next to the last meeting. It was the last meeting scheduled. And we, because I knew if I said, you know, this is pointless, we're not, that they would have said, no, no, just stay. We'll keep talking. And this still would have gotten nowhere. So, I thought, we need to let them know that we're, I'm done.
Bit of this, bit of it.
So, we got up and left and, and they called us back up basically and said, let's meet again. And then they basically gave us what our last offer was. They said, fine, we agree with it. So, it's getting more contentious. And so, the past time around, we didn't even go in. This is the first time we went in and hired a lawyer. We don't even negotiate. We just have the lawyer negotiate. So, the lawyer does start speaking for us. Because it's reached the point where it's just that that seems to be the best.
Well, and you can make the point that it costs a lot for a lawyer. But there's also a lot at stake, you know, the health insurance and all the other things that go into a contract is big money.
She is quite helpful. She coaches us a lot.
Oh, it's not the meeting I sat in on and she was the one that we were talking to via?
Dina.
No, it's Dina.
So, you're not just negotiating with the teachers that you know anymore. It's SU-wise.
It's not just SU-wide. It's NEA, it's statewide. There's a statewide strategy. Boards can't develop a statewide strategy. It's against the law. NEA has no, there's no quorum about developing. And they are currently developing their new statewide strategy because most towns have settled and they're getting ready to roll again. So, it's, we're, it's, and when I started, I think Vermont was 28th in pay, 29th in pay in the US. And I think we're up in like, I think we're at number 20 and rising like a meteor. Because the NEA in the state.
That's their goal is to like advance.
NEA in the state is really good. They're very good. They're very, not anti-union. The whole stuff that happened in West Virginia, I was totally for those West Virginia teachers. No pay raises in three or four years, getting, you know, just asking for a 5%. Starting salaries are coming in, I think at the high twenties.
Right.
I mean, they're, it's terrible.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, they needed to go on strike. And I'm not anti-union. It's just, it's, there's a point where we need to, enough's enough. Our pay scales, the way we do the grid system, it just goes out of sight and we're going to get, if we keep on our course, we're going to get hammered. So, we need to put the brakes somewhere. So, that's it in a nutshell. So, if you guys want to send somebody, I'm happy, what I told Joe is I'd be, I'd like to bring a new person down, introduce them to the group, and then I'm done. And then they can go. So, like I said, it's fun. Joe's entertaining.
Oh, he's got, he's got all kinds of knowledge.
Yeah, and he's actually fun to listen to, so it's not like it's a drone-on session.
How long do the meetings usually last?
Two hours, very strict. Start at six, we have a little sandwich, goes to eight, done. Does not go beyond eight o'clock, ever, so.
And how is this covered? How is his time paid for?
He.
The SBA?
No, the SBA doesn't actually pay him. I'm not quite sure, certain of.
I don't know either.
How he gets paid. I know he doesn't get paid by the SBA. I want to say he probably somehow gets paid by VTO or something. I don't, but I don't, I don't quote him on that because I don't know.
But not paid by?
No, we don't pay him.
Not paid by us?
No. If we hired him as a district to help us with negotiations, we would pay him. Because that's the kind of stuff he would do for us. If we wanted to hire him, he would definitely be hired.
All right.
So, if you pick somebody, if you don't pick somebody, let me know.
When's the next meeting?
And location?
Always in Hartford, always at the superintendent's office in Hartford, in White River Junction, next to the school there. That's not it.
So, anybody interested or in either of these opportunities, okay.
And if one, if we have an appointed person and that person can't make it to one, can we have a backup? Is that acceptable or just, they just want to see the same face each time?
They, yeah, he's, Joe doesn't like backups, so I've never sent a backup.
So, do you go or you can't?
Because I can't find the date for the next one.
So, you'll send an email?
When I find out, I'll let you do it, Shannon.
Okay.
Great.
Anyone else?
Lisa, were you interested?
Don't vote on this. Do not vote on this. This is not an official board position. This is one of you, just so it says, I'll go.
Okay.
But don't vote on it. And in fact, when we communicate, this group communicates to each other, we use our personal emails. And this is completely legal. Because this is, this is, we can't, we're not a decision-making body. We can't make a decision. As long as we keep those emails in our circle, we don't have a quorum of any board or body. So, you just need to do it like a nod ahead.
And if any of you want to join in with us on Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to, but I.
Well, no, I understand. You got to work, but, you know.
If we get, if we have not noticed, I hope this is over, but.
There's a lot of, there's all kinds of just sitting around.
There is.
Just sitting around, waiting and the mediator jumps around all over the place. They'll be in one room, we'll be in another and you go back.
I got some hope that we'll bust through.
Yeah, I think so.
I hope so.
I'd be optimistic.
So, you hit in then with the nod of the heads here? I'll get a hold if you want to find out.
Thanks, guys.
I think you'd be awesome. I'm here for three years too, so.
There's continuity.
I'm going to be going into the next negotiations or I'll be around.
No confidence.
We are not negotiating any more time for here. I'm just one year. So, should we hold off on selecting negotiators in good faith that things are going to be settled Thursday? Or should we select a couple just to ward off evil spirits?
If you've got a coin, we can flip. I don't know. I don't have any idea what's going to happen.
Is anybody interested in negotiating?
So, it's Thursday, what's the time?
Starts with nine o'clock and it'll probably end at five. I'm not sure. If we're really, if we're really close, it could go a little longer than that. Or maybe if we don't get anywhere, it could be a lot shorter than that.
I'm slaughtering ducks on Thursday.
That'll probably be more fun.
All right, maybe we should hold off and wait, wait for the next round.
Spend your morning doing that and then you come in, just get covered.
Come like that. Yeah, come like that. That'll set the mood. That'll set the mood for the day.
All right. Is that all for negotiations? Thanks. I'm grateful that Gio did that.
Yeah.
All right, so we have this document next on the agenda. It's our Steve Dale agreement. So, it basically says that he will help to make our transition as smooth as possible and give us feedback on perhaps what the next steps should be. And then also, so, those are the sorts of things that'll help. For example, seeing the potential for some restructuring of the full board, those sorts of things. He can look at the big picture and then say, perhaps you guys should be looking in this direction to sort of help us protect.
And this would be opportunities for us to meet with him outside of our regularly appointed board meetings.
Or he could come to our board meetings. Either way, so this is just here for us to look at. I think it's a pretty good idea because.
Absolutely.
And I think it's reasonable in terms of price.
And this is part of the $10,000 that you've got in the budget. This is.
This will be Bethel and Roylton money. That money's not available until July 1st.
Okay. This money's not available until July 1st?
And that is, no, this money would come out of your budgets now. But the money I'm talking about will be available to the whole SU. So, we have to look at it as all the board members.
Wouldn't the other board need to approve money this year?
We can.
Well, you know, basically, I've been asked by them, where is the money coming to pay committees? I said, well, the new board doesn't have any money. You know, it's going to, that was, a couple of Roylton board members asked me that. And I said, no, you know, we've, we've set aside some money. We're going to split it and.
Right, but I mean, like if somebody needs to approve this.
Right, if money is being paid to Steve prior to the 1st of July, it's coming out of current budgets.
Correct.
And so, is it up to?
I'm sure you should probably ask them, I guess, since it's going to come out of their.
But there are board budget lines.
Yeah.
That would cover this, correct? Okay.
So, what exactly do we?
You need me, you guys? Are you done?
To make sure that we're not missing any deadlines, that we're attending to all the details that we need to attend to. I just think it's pretty important and what will happen to the board funds in those budgets at the end of the year.
See surplus.
Right.
Or deficits, I guess.
Surplus or deficit, though, we're going to inherit that.
Right.
Either way. July 1st, either way.
Yeah, it'll be something you'll have to repay or enjoy a surplus.
I think this is a really nice way personally for us to be proactive and to be on top of who we are as board members and how we function as a team and making sure that we're aware of all the moving parts as opposed to having a lot of oopses that happen along the way and then trying to recover. And I think with Steve on board, we can be asking those questions or he might even preempt it or prompt us with suggestions that we wouldn't have even thought about. But having had that information, we'll be more informed and more together.
I guess I'd just like to hear more specifically what those types of things were. Forget about $2,000.
Well, that's a trouble we don't know. He has to tell us.
Right, but like, you know.
Well, just learning about the negotiations support group and then going to those negotiation, you know, to listen to the negotiations that are happening.
But that's Steve Dale.
He would explain all that. Those are things that we could ask him about systems, about different processes that happen as school board members. Am I right, Lisa?
He was, he was the chair, he was the executive director of the School Boards Association. So, he trained boards, basically is what he did. I mean, and, you know, he was out with boards and trying to look at the work that you guys have to do and make it efficient. I'd like him to work with us all on policy governance. I'm not sure whether all the boards will be receptive to that. Some of them might romanticize a little more than others, but I'd like to try for that. But he's got a wealth of experience in working with boards. And I think, I can say that I think the fact that we were able to pull this merger off, you know, has a lot to do with him, yeah.
And I would, I would imagine if we've got four opportunities for meetings with him, the first one would be us asking him questions and planning out what we could cover in the next three meetings.
I think Lisa's intent was to try to get, make sure we don't drop anything, that we do the things we need to do between now and the end of the year.
Contract.
Yeah, you know.
He can help us set up policies and things like that.
Right.
I hope we get a better scope in with the policies so that everybody's working on the same thing, but.
My sense was that there are certain legal things that have to happen in terms of wrapping up the old boards and launching us as cleanly as possible. And that's what I really wanted his advice for because he's seen this process play out in other places and knows the things that have to be done and have to be tended to. I think that Bruce has a good grasp on that as well, but also with so many districts going through the same process, I think that it seems like it can be an overwhelming task. And so, so that's why I just thought that this was a reasonable step.
Well, I've been on a number of boards and I'm actually on one right now that's having some major issues. And I just feel like it is so good to be cohesive and working together and understanding, you know, policy governance, just how we're going to work together and making sure we're aware of all the moving parts. Because when you get into a train wreck, it's just hard to, hard to manage it after that and it takes a lot of extra time. So, this will be a time saver and a money saver, I think. It's an insurance policy. So, I'm for it. So, I'm going to stop talking.
Do we need to vote on this?
We could vote on it and then we could decide to get the blessing from the current board.
If you get time, Bruce, we have some questions that we'd like to ask.
Yeah, it's a contract, so you probably, it's a legal document, so.
But it's between us and Steve, our board.
You just don't know where your resources are coming from. That's.
But you're telling us that the resources are there.
I believe they are, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe they are.
Okay.
I don't know where, what I'm going to get into here.
But it sounds like we would have to at least let the old board know what we're wanting to do.
Well, I know that Dave knows what we want to do. I've been communicating with him throughout. And I believe that Christine also, because I asked, I mean, I don't, the boards haven't voted. I don't mean to represent that in any way. I think that all three of us, we had a meeting, Eunice was there at the office and Steve Dale came down. So, they wanted to get us together as chairs so we could look at the scope of what each board should be doing so that we're not stepping on each other's toes, duplicating work, et cetera. And so, this was one of the things that we thought was a reasonable idea. At that point, there wasn't a contract, but they agreed with the idea that bringing somebody on board to make it so that it's smooth and so that balls don't get dropped. There have been some times when things have not gone as smoothly as possible. And I receive a message in the middle of the day and I'm floundering to catch up for the rest of the day. And to the degree possible, I'd like for that to not happen because what starts to scare me is what have I missed that I don't even know is an issue? Or what are we missing that we don't even know is an issue? And I just think the scope of all of the transitions in the whole district, so all 11 communities, makes it daunting for our SU. And so, that's, that's my fear, is that we miss something that I don't even have on my radar right now.
To me, this isn't coming out of, I mean, it's a Roylton budget and a Bethel budget right now. And so, it's spending money that, you know, technically we don't have yet. But it's difficult because which board are we going to ask for permission?
Well, I think we need to bring it up at the three board meeting when we're all together because it does involve shutting them down.
It doesn't really matter what it comes from, though, because like.
It is all, yeah.
It's all going to end up in our, that's my, you know, final point, it's all going to end up in our maps July 1st.
But I just think we should do it with the whole board because it does involve them because it's going to be part of their process of closing out their boards.
Make sure there's an agenda item for them.
April 9th, is that going to be soon enough? Lisa, do we want to let him know sooner?
I, I think ideally, we wanted to let him know, but.
We can just say we're going to bring it up at the next, April 9th. What's our hand?
I mean, do we want to?
If the other board authority sent their board.
Yeah.
We don't really need them till June.
If the board leadership is, has.
No, we need him, we need him prior to June because he's looking out for our interests and trying to help us navigate. So, the whole issue about the supervisory union full board.
Yeah.
Wasn't an issue even on my radar until he brought it up at that meeting of the three of us and said to Christine and Dave, have you guys been looking out for them in this way? At which point, you know, I wrote a letter and went to that meeting that night and said. and said, "This is something we need to be thinking about before the board is reorganized, because otherwise, these very small towns will have three representatives, and we as the largest school in the district, system in the district, will be on equal footing. What's the incentive to reorganize from that at that point?" So it needs to be handled ahead of time. And that was something that wasn't on my radar until we had that conversation.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we accept this contract or enter this agreement with Steve Dale.
If he just invoiced us in July?
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion after? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I guess I'm not supposed to vote. Alright, um, so I should, we should still bring it to the attention of the two other boards? Thank you, April.
I, to be fair, they brought that very large, uh, field trip to the attention of the boards tonight, and it's already gone out to the parents, so, yeah.
Alright.
We'll just ask forgiveness and not permission.
Right, there you go. Okay, um, up next, White River Valley Union District.
I'd say River Valley School District.
School District, okay.
Change to, from the White River Union District to the White River Valley School District?
Yeah, it's a, you know, we're the River Valley School.
Yeah.
So it's just be the River Valley School District, so it's not confusing for people.
Yeah, right, and so can we go to the state board and ask for that change?
So it's White River Valley?
So it'd be W R V S D instead of W R U D?
I like that better, yeah.
There's something very ugly and clunky about W R.
Feels like we're stuck in a rut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, feels like mud.
Right, so it would add consistency.
Yeah. So where do we go for that? I mean, where are we-
We're gonna have to move it to Bruce. So I'd make a motion that, or I'd see a motion that we-
Motion to rename our district to White River Valley School District.
Exactly.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So, in your email, if you have a device, there is-
It's gonna take quite a bit of editing, because it's created for the Essex School District. So I would propose, because it's starting to get late, that, um, that I go ahead and edit it and table it for the next meeting, but I will send it out, or hopefully attach it to the agenda so everyone can review it before the meeting. It's also being reviewed by the South Royalton current board of the district. And perhaps the board of-
Okay, so you're gonna, um-
I'll edit it so that it would reflect our districts.
Oh, is it posted to the board?
So prior to-
And present it at the next board? At the next board.
Okay, so that'll be for April 9th. Alright, um, snow days and creative solutions.
So, um, we've had a number of snow days in South Royalton, um, this year, and one of the things that's been brought to my attention, and I certainly, I have nine-year-olds, so I certainly might get this too, is that, um, number one, there's no age limit on letting your children home legally in the state of Vermont.
Right.
And-
Meaning there's no minimum?
There's no minimum, technically, because we're just leaving the state environment. So my concern is sort of twofold. One, we have a number of families in the district, might be one of them, where both parents work. And when you have so many snow days, we're putting parents in a position that, you know, what, and the flu has been particularly gruesome this year. So we have a number of parents who, one parent has taken off work and another in, traded back and forth, but you're running out of workdays and you're running into being in trouble at work. So there's, there's the potential that a number of students are being left at home by themselves, unsupervised, in that, you know, seven, eight, nine age category that's sort of concerning. Also, we also know that there are a number of students where the only hot meal they get is when they come to school. And so, one of the, um, solutions that I've seen, that I would like to just think about, if it's possible doing here, um, in the Windsor school system, they have a drop-in center. So they open the gymnasium for the day, and we could do this on one campus or both campuses. And they have a few staff people, not necessarily everyday school staff, but they have people who come in who promise to be there regardless of weather. So if you call a snow day, maybe they can walk, maybe they have a super duper four-wheel drive, but they're going to be there all day supervising so that students sort of, you know, we run pre-K, so pre-K through six, or pre-K through middle school, I don't know what the upper limit is. But you could drop them in, um, there would be the opportunity to get lunch, show movies, you just keep them, do activities all day. We have to pay some staff sort of minimally, but it would, um, be a safe place where you could drop your kids off. I think it would be a huge relief to a lot of families in the area. And if we had the staffing, we could even think about opening it up to the surrounding towns, and it makes us more of a, more attractive community-centered, family-centered, kid-friendly, you know, safety-oriented community in there. So it's an idea that has worked in other places, and I, I just would really like to explore it here.
And where did you say it's actually working?
Um, in Windsor.
Do we need to vote on whether we think it's a good idea to explore it?
Well, why don't we ask the administration to give us some kind of process that we want to be? And that's the third, I mean, given ideas for the staff. And like, how would you get the school budget?
So ask the administration to look into this and flush it out for us, then? Would that be the right?
I mean, we may wanna wait to have them do it like over the summer or something like that, because right now we're kind of a, a little slammed, but I think it's good.
I just, it's, and even if it didn't happen this year, it is an idea that I would like to see implemented at, moving forward, because it is, it's, it's a real burden on a lot of families.
I would imagine, I happen to know it's a real burden on his family, because I, I see the texts from his wife trying to find the childcare.
I would imagine it could be a stipend in position as well, so, because it is in addition to your regular teaching duties. So if there were stipends that were offered.
And teachers are getting salaried, so they're, they're not necessarily losing it. And I, I don't know that it has to be teachers or teaching staff, just even retired community members, as long as they're background checked.
But you want people to volunteer to come in.
Right.
It would be an extra day for teachers, because they make up snow days already.
Right, and they would still have to make up the day at the end of the year.
And the other thing is a safety concern, when you start telling people they have to travel in a, to be the snow.
They don't have to, this would be-
Yeah, no, but you, yeah.
Be set up with all those-
I guess it would be volunteers.
It would be people who are saying, "I am going to be there to, to," you know, the adults are, are saying, "I'm making that commitment," just like many of us have jobs where we have a commitment. If it's snowing, I live in, like you said, if I didn't want to drive in the snow, I live in Florida.
Right.
I have a job where I go every time it snows, and I get that, and that's something that I'm okay with, but it's my kids that I'm worried about.
Right, so that's why I think we should offer, we should explore offering a stipend, right?
Pay something per hour.
Perhaps similar to what, what gets, there's a per diem rate for most teachers for summer work time. So if you offered your per diem summer rate to people who are willing to do that, because I think it, it should be staff that's already been vetted by the school, that's had a criminal records check, that's had fingerprints, that we can ensure is like a safe person to have there.
So the staffing ratio has to be maintained for something like that?
But the-
I mean, do we, in terms of number of people to the number of kids that are there?
I think that should be part of the exploration.
And I think if Windsor's already doing this, we've got a model or two to look at.
And I'm also thinking the parents, if they can, would be particularly interested, because they don't get paid on snow days.
Right.
And so they're waiting for that pay in June, because they only get paid the hours they work.
Or taking their vacation days.
Yeah. So that's, that's a challenge.
Okay, so, we all agree that should be explored?
Yeah.
Okay.
Really?
What?
Are they just, is it loud?
Maybe it's just freezing, okay, I don't know.
I think it just echoes into the door.
Alright.
We're just gonna say that they're not arguing.
Alright, great. So principal search, um, our, our, we were not able to make an elementary hire, so we know that. We, I'm not sure if we're, I suspect we're gonna reopen that, because we interviewed our top candidates. So I would imagine that we're gonna start looking again.
So did you guys interview a Thursday person after the?
There were two other candidates too.
We interviewed, um, five?
But, on the day that we were doing the inter, the meeting, the top two candidates, there was one that came through by email for us to look at with a resume, like a late entry. But there was also one that you were interviewing at the school on the same day.
Right, so for various reasons, um, we have the two that we thought were best qualified.
So, so that was it?
Right. So I, and we've reopened the high school search.
Just, did you hear back from, like, the person you declined? Was it just the money, or was it?
I think there were some other factors that, that play in that are out of our control. So, those are both reopened searches.
That's too bad, I was sad.
Me too. It was, it was not what I wanted to hear. Alright, and so, we are now scheduled to have an executive session around-
Oh, public comment first?
Public comment?
Any public comment?
Alright, and now, um, I, I, let me see if Bruce is available, because I, I'm not sure.
I would have made the decision to move the next meeting date to next.
Oh, did he ask?
Yep, next meeting date, April 9th. What time should we set our meeting for? So, the attempt at moving it to seven, the agenda looked brief. That was guidance from Bruce, because the, I don't know how the Royalton board members have been expressing that they feel, but a couple of the Bethel board members really said they wanted to be able to attend our meetings. So attempted to move our meeting to seven so that hopefully their very short agendas would be over, and then we could have our meeting.
I think that's good, I think seven.
Okay, seven, seven.
I was confused as, and, and maybe this is just me, why we had the updates from the committees during that meeting, and then we just get into the weeds-
Yep.
-with so many people, so if that hadn't happened and that had happened in here, then we would've, you know.
I also think that if there's going to be, um, updates or presentations that are going to be longer than five minutes or so, that they should be added to the agenda, because we can't adequately plan.
And I wonder if those that presented really realize that there's time constraints?
Right.
Probably not.
Right, I mean, they're out of here when they're out of here. And I loved both presentations, but it's a matter of, you know, we, we have sort of marathon meetings planned.
Try and see if Bruce is-
Okay, yep.